All right. Let's call the Osseo City Council regular meeting in order here for Monday, March 24th at 7:00 PM. Roll call, looks like we have all members with us this evening. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Good. Got a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve, or Torres, to approve tonight's agendas. Is there a second?
Second.
Signed by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, number five, consent agenda. Any questions on that, or if not, we look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Signed by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, next is matters from the floor. Any wish and speak, please step forward, state your name and address, and address the council in a manner you wish. Jingle, not attempt to answer your questions, but we'll consider those at future meetings. Is there any matters on the floor? Third time matters on the floor? Okay, no. Matter of floor now closed. Seven, special business, seven A, council appointments for vacant council member committee and commission seats.
Mayor and council, at the March 10th council meeting, a vacancy was declared to the seat held by Councilmember Holstrom. Councilmember Holstrom held a position of alternate acting mayor, fire relief association, intergovernmental relations, and public safety advisory committee. In particular, dates are currently being identified for possible public safety advisory committee meeting. So we are looking for some possible other council members to fill those roles in the time being.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I would like to go on the public safety advisory committee meeting if possible. I've served on that previously with Councilman Holstrom. I would also be able to take the alternate, alternate acting mayor role as well as the next most senior person here. So those would be two that I would certainly be willing to fill.
Mr. Torres, any comments?
Yeah, I would actually agree with those. I mean, just logically, they, they just make sense.
Seniority and prior experience. Okay, that leaves fire relief and intergovernmental.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
So I would be willing to serve on intergovernmental relations. I've got a lot of committees, just based on my time available, that the council has tasked me with, so I really don't need another meeting, so I'm not really interested in the fire relief association position.
Good.
I am gonna ditto that. I am seeing my name on a lot of lines, so I want to make sure that I do good service to the things that I'm already on.
So no one wants to serve with me on the fire relief? Is that, that's what I'm, what I'm feeling right now?
Two, two of the four of us are not in. The other one is disqualified.
I'll be very, I'll be very honest, the fire, fire relief meets pretty minimally. It's usually a very short meeting, so yes, we, we should probably have somebody else on there, but if we just lived with one for a little while, that would probably be okay too, until we figure out what's, what's happening with that chair moving forward, so.
All right, I'll, I'll take it.
A little passive, I'm twisting there.
Yeah. All right, so based on that, we don't have to read through all of these with the changes, alternate acting mayor, Councilmember Cook, fire relief association, will be Councilmember Cook, and Mayor Poppy, intergovernmental relations committee, Councilmember Torres and Councilmember Schultz, public safety advisory committee, Councilmember Cook and Councilmember Torres. So someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the changes as read. Is there a second?
Second.
Signed by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? See none, the vote please.
That would be roll call vote.
Yep.
I'm sorry, who seconded that? Was that Councilmember Torres? Thank you.
Councilmember Torres.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This is resolution number 14. Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. All right, number eight, public hearings, no public hearings this evening. Number nine, old business, nine A, approve Rum River Consultants' contract update, service start date amendment.
Mayor and council, you'll remember on March 10th, the Osseo City Council voted to appoint Rum River Consultants as the designated building official for the city of Osseo with an effective date of June 11th, 2025. On March 14th, Chief Administrator Michelson and I met with Metro West Inspection Services to discuss the logistics of transitioning to Rum River Consultants. It was determined that the start date with RRC should be modified in over, in order to make sure there's a smooth transition, especially considering some of the upcoming Osseo area school district renovations that, that will be happening. And those need to start, possibly some of those might be starting in May, so they need to start doing some plan review in order to be ready for those projects to start. I will say Metro West was very accommodating and agreed to finish out existing permits that are open, but not take on any new permits past the, past April 1st. So we are looking to modify the contract with Rum River to start now on April 1st, so they can begin, especially, like I said, in particular, those, those projects having to do with the school district. So the, the staff recommendation is to update the contract with Rum River Consultants, moving the effective date from June 11th, 2025, to April 1st, 2025. And again, Carrie and Andy from Rum River are here as well to answer any questions you may have.
What's all the questions?
My only question is, Mr. Mayor, is it mentions, it says something along the lines of changing the start date, and there were also some changes to the fee schedule that needed to be reflected, what?
Yes, so.
That's coming up later.
There are, yeah, there are a number of items in those.
It's all in the same thing.
Yeah, this one just happens to be old business because it is a contract that we have.
Contract update from previously, and then those fee changes and summary publication, that's all later on in the meeting.
Sorry?
Yep.
Yeah, then I'm absolutely 100% in favor of moving up the date.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the change of the start date from June to April 1st, 2025.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve the Rum River Consultant Contract Update with a Service Start Date Amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Signed by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, nine B, 2025 alley reconstruction project. Welcome back, Michelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. At the last council meeting, this information was presented to the council. At that time, the action was to receive bids and call the assessment hearing. Based on that conversation with the council, we went and called off the, calling the assessment hearing until such a time that the council has a discussion with Ellers on the remainder of the 2022 bond. So with that, I appreciate Attorney Techen's input as to how to present this back to council. And based on that conversation before you is just the summary of the bids received for this project, the 2025 alley project, which includes seven alleys. We received 12 bids, very good bid results provided with this bid opening. It was under our, the estimate, the opinion of probable cost, and you have Omen Contracting Companies as a little bid of $750,546.39. So with, the intent of receiving the bids is just so that the council acknowledges that the bid opening occurred, sees the results of the bids, and understanding that there is some further action required. This is not an award of bid, it's just simply acknowledging bids were received. So upon consultation with Attorney Techen, the council could, at their discretion, just approve a motion receiving the bids. And then with that, just an update in the schedule, then we would be looking to award the contract and call the assessment hearing in April on the 14th, and that's within the 60-day requirement for awarding a contract based, based off the timing of the bid opening. And then the assessment hearing would take place in May, and then the contractor has indicated they would want to start on this project midsummer if awarded the contract. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have about the bid opening or the process that I outlined this evening.
Questions, council?
I don't necessarily have a question per se, but I just want to let the council know that under the current schedule, May 12th, there's the assessment hearing. I will not be here that evening, just to let you guys know.
Are we, just need to, we're just looking for a motion to approve the, the.
To accept the bids.
To accept the Ellers, or the bid from Omen Contracting?
No, no, we're not wanting to bid, we're just accepting all the.
Oh, okay.
All the, and that we've opened the bids and we're accepting the bids for, but we have not awarded.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the bids on the alley reconstruction project.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Cook to accept the bids for the 2025 alley reconstruction project. Is there a second?
A second.
Signed by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, 10, new business, 10 A, approve digitizing Osseo project and Laser, Laserfish software.
Mayor and council, like many municipalities, the city of Osseo has a very outdated filing system.
No.
That includes.
Just get rid of the rotary phones. This won't do much.
That includes decades of files stored in boxes and cabinets. Every plan, permit, project, contract, and license in the city of Osseo that's ever been issued or received is filed away somewhere at City Hall. As you can imagine, it can be very cumbersome to locate a document when it comes time to search for specific items or specific pieces of paper at the request of residents. Not only is it a project to dig through boxes, but these boxes are susceptible to damage or loss being stored in cabinets and in our basement, which we found today had water in our storage rooms. A few examples of documents the city has to keep permanently include city council minutes and packets, ordinances and resolutions, project files and special assessments, building inspection reports for the lifetime of any property in Osseo, election results, annual budgets, personnel policies, and capital improvement project bids. I headed up the project to reach out to surrounding cities to find out what software they're using to store documents in cloud and on their networks, and every city I've spoken to in Minnesota uses Laserfish. The software is installed and customized to us by a third-party company, which I have included in the packet with proposals for review. These companies would then work with staff at Osseo to customize the software to fit the needs specifically to our city, implement and train staff on the program, and offer IT support services after implementation. I have worked with Laserfish at the city I worked for prior to coming to Osseo, and the organization and ease of storing these documents make a night and day difference when it comes to accessing information. Every document in the city could be scanned, labeled with metadata, and stored in the Laserfish cloud. Accessibility to city records would be as simple as a search in Laserfish, in Laserfish using simple keywords, paraphrases, address numbers, et cetera, to pull all related information in. Retention schedules can also be set up within the software to alert staff when retention periods of documents are expiring, which would ease the amount of storage that the city needs to keep in total. City staff would be heading this project up. We could set this up as a multi-year project. City Hall staff likely will be in charge of this type of project. Outsourcing these types of scanning costs $275 to $300 per box, so obviously, we wouldn't outsource much of anything with this project, other than the software implementation. As we're not in an election, as we're not in an election year, this would be a good time to head up a project of this magnitude for staff time, especially for me personally, having worked with the software before. And I do need you to note that the desktop scanners were not included in the proposals, so those would have to be purchased separately from the city. They run around $900 apiece, and ideally, we'd like four to five scanners for staff desks to start this project. Staff is asking that the council approve a proposal to start a project digitizing the city of Osseo and bringing it into 2025. While TKB Associates comes in the lowest in overall cost on the proposals, the main factor in fluctuating proposal costs is due to the implementation and training hour differences. Staff is recommending that council approve a proposal with either CDI or OPG III based on extensive implementation inclusion added to proposals, along with overall positive experience from municipalities in the area who have utilized the two companies. Annual site license prices at OPG III and CDI run at $3,255 per year versus the $4,000 or $4,100 license fees per year from every other business. The user license is a reoccurring annual cost that the city would need budgeted in future years, and a site license covers up to 100 employees at 10 terabytes of storage per user. So it's technically unlimited storage, is how they call that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
So surprisingly, I've actually got a little experience with this, at least with Laserfish. So, yeah, when I was at Ameriprise, we went through this very process about a decade ago, but it was.
Well, this is Osseo.
Yeah, it was, but Laserfish, there's not enough cool things to say about it, and I know that if advisors, who we used to joke, like, could barely turn on their computers, all fun intended, it's, it's a really easy-to-use thing once you get up a little bit of a learning curve, and it's not a huge learning curve. Regarding staff letting us know that it kind of comes down to, what was it, CDI and OPG, I think ultimately, when you get into a price differential, that's not a whole lot, then I think what we need to look at is kind of, how are these companies looked at in the industry, right? And who has the higher rating, so forth? Because it's ultimately going to come down to customer service and which company is the better company that's going to work with staff and with staff in mind. When I look through CDIs, the one thing that I saw that I liked is they were real compliance-focused, and that's not to say that the other company isn't, but it's, just felt like they went a little bit more in-depth, things like SOC 2, and we don't have to go into the minutia of that, but these are important things that the city needs to think of from a risk perspective, right? Because privacy is obviously a huge deal. And you want to make sure when you're putting all this stuff in the cloud, that you're compliant, because that's the first thing auditors are going to go after when you get audited, is okay, where's your data? How's it getting stored? What's the access like? And I really liked CDI, at least just from the onset. I don't have an opinion firmly on one or the other, but I like, I like what I saw with both of them. But I, I fully support the initiative, and I think staff has found the right way to go about it, which is Laserfish. I mean, it's just, like I said, if advisors could do it, our city's easily going to be able to do it. Not to say that the task is easy, but the learning curve is really good, and it's absolutely something that, that we need to do. And as you'll hear in our final reports, there's, it's even, there's opportunities that are even beyond the scope of just, you know, when we get all the official stuff that needs to be done, and I'll give that report during the historical committee report.
Okay.
I mean, I, I obviously, I think this is for sure something that has to be done. I mean, this, this is not feasible or viable to keep, continue to just mass accumulate paper. This is a logical way to do it. My question is, where's, I know it's not currently a budgeted item, so is there money someplace to, to do it? Like, I mean, if there's money to do it, then yeah, we should do it. If there's not money to do it, then it would have to wait a year, and then we would have to budget money to do it moving forward, which I don't think anybody wants to do. But, you know, my understanding is when we passed that budget originally, that it was a pretty tight, tight budget, so I just want to make sure that we, because it's not, I mean, the upfront costs with the equipment and things like that, the yearly cost obviously is manageable, the upfront cost of the equipment is going to be substantial, and, and so just that we have a plan of where this, you know, I don't know, rough numbers of, you know, 17, $1,800 is going to, or $18,000 is going to come from with, with equipment, and then yearly services and fees and things like that. So $18,000 is not a, just a little, little, little amount of money, so.
Mr. Mayor, so I think one of the potential resources is that when we put the budget together, we very much underestimated how much we'd be getting in, in building permit fees. So I don't think that the changeover that we're going to be discussing here is going to do that, but I think that's going to be a potential source for funding for this. I totally understand your perspective in, you know, if we need to really come up, and I think it's not an unfair ask to come up like, where is this going to actually come from? But that's just one potential area, and I don't remember what our contingency.
Yeah, we have contingency money too.
Yeah, no, I mean, I assume that we had some contingency things, things like that, but we've had a few different things, you know, at meetings so far that have come up this year that have been like, oh, there's money here, there's money there, like, we just got to make sure that we can be able to tell our constituents that this is where the money's coming from. You know, I mean, I just think transparency is important when it comes to that, and, but I'm all, I'm 100% in favor of moving in this direction. I think we absolutely 100% have to do this. This makes no sense to continue to operate out of file boxes and stuff like that. I mean, this is an archaic way of doing things.
I can, I can attest to, well, first off, I can attest to being a new employee here and trying to find anything, and then going to the next newest employee, and she's trying to navigate this complicated system of, of paper that is on multi-levels, and so, yes, I mean, as, as a staff member, I see this as a pretty important need, but to address your questions about, you know, the, the budgetary concerns, and that's absolutely a concern for us to have. Now, I don't, I don't claim to be the, the all-knowing budget person here. There's still a learning curve for me, but my understanding is this is built within the general fund. We've reached out to the, the finance department, and I'm not sure if you had anything you, did you get anything back from there?
I haven't heard back.
Okay. So to say specifically, we have, you know, $20,000 in, in this particular fund, I can't, I can't give you that exact data right now, but what I, what I do know is that we have contingencies built in. This is part of an ongoing conversation of what can we move forward with right now and what can we not? And the, the conversation is, this is something that we move forward, and we can find contingency funds to put towards, to get this project started, because like we said, it's going to be a multi-year, likely a multi-year project, and there might be other things that come forward about it in the future. We might need to look at bringing on, whether it's a paid intern or some sort of part-time staff member, as, as we get deeper into this, we're going to find more and more what the needs are to really implement it. But to, to not entirely answer your question, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't name a particular fund, but, but it is, it is built in. There are funds available to us to use towards especially some of these improvements.
Mr. Mayor, I absolutely acknowledge Councilmember Cook's concerns about budgetary constraints. That is a very important thing to always keep in mind, and he's also correct, and over the course of the last two, three meetings, we kind of get these little one-offs that are coming up, and eventually, you have enough one-offs, now you're talking some fairly substantial money. That being said, once we pair up all the various nice-to-haves that may not have been included in the original budget, then I think it behooves us to look at return on investment, just like any business. And I would say something like this initiative has an absolute return on investment for a couple of reasons. So I had already brought up the fact about risk mitigation, but there's also the fact that when you are doing, from what I understand, the way that filing systems work right now, we've got all this paper, paper gets lost, if things get lost, that consumes time, if you consume time, that consumes money. So just like we did with Rum River a moment ago, I think we need, when we think through this, we need to think through it the same way. It's an investment. So this is money that's invested into the city to recover time from staff and to reduce human mistakes that come with having paper. So I'm just, I'm just asking the council, when we go into, and I'm thinking, you know, if this is something that falls within goals, or wherever it is, that we start making these decisions, I think, which, by the way, I think is a great place to start looking at all these one-offs. It's like, okay, how do they fit within the set of goals that we are going to have for this year, and how do we accomplish them? But when I rank the various things that are coming up, I personally put the, the digitization, I actually got that off, in doing that process for this, doing that process for the city, because it's just, I don't know, it's just, I mean, we kind of ha-ha about, yeah, let's get, you know, Osseo into the 20th, if not 21st century, but it is a real thing. Digitizing is something that you just, that's the way of the world. People just don't operate on paper. My law practice doesn't operate on paper, even though I'm the paper guy, right? When it comes to real official stuff, that stuff's flying back and forth with ones and zeros. So just recognizing Councilmember Cook's points, they are valid points, but I think with that, we need to start ranking importance, and personally, I think this is something that falls higher than lower on the, on the importance chain.
Yeah, and the approved budget, there's 20,000 in the contingency. Just my question of the OPG and the CDI, based on your conversations, is there one in particular that seemed better interaction with, or?
Well, I actually had a chance to meet with CDI in person at the MCFWA conference last week, so I was able to get a lot more information on the implementation of the CDI program. So I would say if I had a preference, I would go with CDI based on the training and their local-ish.
Yeah, Hudson.
I think they're, yeah, Hudson. But, you know, the software is all the same.
Yeah.
The actual program itself is the same, it just is going to vary in how they're going to set us up with customization.
And then Councilmember Torres, that was, CDI is the one that you had mentioned as well.
Correct. The CDI was the one that I was leaning towards, if I was in those shoes, but I'm absolutely going to defer to staff, because it's going to be you folks that are actually doing the do, right? So if there's a comfort level with one over the other, I'm going to acquiesce to that, that feeling, but it's nice to hear the CDI. From my standpoint, from the risk mitigation standpoint, it's nice that that pairs up. And like I said earlier, it really is going to come down to support. Who do you feel is going to give you the best support? Because this is technology, right? Technology comes down to where's your best support at?
Mr. Mayor, I'll say that Natalie has definitely reached out to a lot of cities and gathered a lot of data around this, so she's probably the best one to attest to which one has the best reputation and, and what exactly we're looking for.
Any further questions, council? If not, for a motion. Here is the. I have a fear.
I have a fear. I'm just looking for the exact words for the motion. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal, enter into a contract to utilize Laserfish as the city's digital document managing system and cloud-based document repository. And just a queer, um, quick point of order. So I'm motioning that we're going to do this, not who we're going to do this with, or are we? Okay, so then if, I'm, we'll add on to that, that we move forward with CDI as this, as the contractor that we utilize for this project.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Torres to approve the proposal and enter into a contract with CDI to utilize the Laserfish for the city. Is there a second?
Second.
Saying by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. R I B, accept donations.
This is the resolution accepting donations to the city of Osseo. Whereas the city, whereas the Osseo City Council is generally authorized to accept contributions of real and personal property pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section four six five point oh three. And whereas the council agrees that said donation would be a benefit to the citizens of Osseo. And whereas the following has proposed this contribution to the city of Osseo, and the donation be used for the specific purpose as indicated below. Donor is TS Garments and Gear, the amount of one hundred dollars, designated to Osseo Police Department Joint Co-op with Holiday for First Responder stickers.
Look for motion to accept tonight's donations. I got a motion by Councilmember Cook to accept donations. Is there a second?
Second.
Saying by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Don't attorney teach him, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution number fifteen. Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. Right. Ten C, approve Osseo Police Department Squad one twenty-five replacement equipment purchase.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Last November, we had a car accident where one of our squad cars got totaled out. And the new car that was ordered to replace that one is actually going to be here on Wednesday. But when that car got hit, there was several pieces of equipment that were in the, the rear cargo area that were also destroyed. I've documented with the insurance company, and the insurance company said, go ahead and replace everything, and they'll reimburse us for it. So tonight, I'm just asking for permission to go ahead and order some of this equipment that's noted in your packet tonight.
Council questions? No, we look for a motion.
This was, Mr. Mayor, this was all, this was all part of our conversation, right? The, the insurance money's coming back to cover, we're just helping to cover the upfront costs?
Yeah, just upfront right now.
Right, okay.
You have to approve the purchases.
Right, correct.
And reimburse from insurance.
This is just the stuff that wasn't bolted down on the car.
Correct.
The rest of the car is separate. This is just equipment.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of replacement police equipment for six thousand one hundred and six dollars and sixty cents.
I got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the requested equipment as stated. Is there a second?
Second.
Saying by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, ten D, approve first reading of Rum River consultant proposed ordinance updates, waive second reading, and the amending the chapter one fifty of the building regulations, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So these are a series of five really, I'm just calling housekeeping items. They're all related to the transition to Rum River Consultants, taking on the role of the designated building official for the city of Osseo. These, the five separate steps do need to be completed in order, but we have them all listed here, so I'll just go through what each one entails. So the first item is an update to Osseo City Code, following the reorganization of state departments, when the construction codes and licensing divisions were transferred from Minnesota Department of Administration to the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry, which was an oversight. So to correct this, RRC authored a, a new ordinance aligning Osseo's code with current Minnesota statutes. So this was reviewed by the city attorney and was also posted at City Hall within the statutory ten-day period for ordinance notification. And the reason we're asking council to consider waiving the second reading is to accommodate, again, that contact, contract start date. And again, back to the, the previous item, it was a, the reason for the accelerated start date was due to the timeline of school districts projects. So you can see how these are all a bit of a domino effect here. The next is the associated summary publication resolution, due in large part to the lengthy nature of the ordinance, preferable to polished summary. And that's followed by a resolution updating Osseo's fee schedule. Those were proposed by RRC and are part of the required onboarding process. And, and also the, the fees reflected here just better reflect industry standards. Next then, the resolution approving DLI plumbing plan review agreement. RRC has secured delegation from the Department of Labor and Industry for plumbing plan review. So this is an advantage to Osseo, because it allows for additional revenue that previously would have been retained by the state to then come to the city. And it also makes for faster timelines and enhanced customer service due to faster timelines. And then lastly, the council would need to approve the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry agreement. So these are all listed here in your packet, but also Andy Schrader and Carrie Lovitzki are here from Rum River, and, and they can go through some of the more technical sides of this if you do have any questions. And then, starting tomorrow morning, Carrie and her team would be here with staff going through some onboarding. But I, I just want to reiterate that we do need these five separate actions to take place in, in order to move forward at this time. So I'll turn it over to you for discussion.
Council questions?
Mr. Mayor, so the one thing that was kind of difficult for me is I see the fee schedule. But being new, I don't have context as far as fees going up, fees staying flat, fees going down.
Yeah, they were highlighted and color-coded, so you might have black and white capital.
All those ones that are crossed, so when we get, all these that are crossed out were replaced.
Oh, so we have to compare.
Yeah, so you should, you should see them, the red lines, and then there are, there are notes built in there too.
Gotcha.
Yep.
So, Mr. Mayor, the only question I have is as we go through, I think there's five different ones. And as I'm looking through, I'm only really seeing approval language for the first one, unless I'm missing it someplace else.
That's the first one, is approval of the first reading and waive the second reading. And then it's summary publication. Those are two and kind of same thing. Then we have another resolution to amend the fee schedule. And then another one to approve the resolution agreement with the Minnesota Department of Labor. And then we need an approval of the Minnesota Department of Labor Industry Agreement.
So it's not outlined in the packet, but it is outlined on our agenda.
Yes.
That's, I just want to know where to look.
So it's kind of six resolutions technically.
Yeah, yeah.
There's one main one, and then five sequential steps.
Exactly.
So I'm going to go with the easiest one, because it's written out. I believe, and I'm on page one forty-eight of the packet, is the motion to approve ordinance, is that the first one?
Yes.
First reading and waive the second.
Okay, so it doesn't really say that in our recommended action, but, so I'll just read it from here. So make a motion to approve the first reading of Rum River Consultants, propose ordinance update, waive second reading, and approve summary publication, amending chapter one fifty of the building regulations.
Okay, we got a.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think the motion to approve the resolution for summary publication is a separate motion.
Yes.
So the first motion is just to approve the ordinance.
Updates, waive the second reading.
And waive the second reading.
Yep.
Okay, that one.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the first reading of the Rum River Consultant Proposed Ordinance Update and waiving the second reading and amending chapter one fifty of the building regulations. Is there a second?
Second.
Saying by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion?
So just again, just so I don't goof something up. So what we are voting on, Attorney Techen, is we're aligning the ordinances, is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct. We're, chapter one fifty is basically just bringing it into compliance with state statute.
Yep, nope, cool. I'm on board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Attorney Techen.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, this is just a motion.
Just a motion?
Right.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, next we'd need a.
I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution for summary publication.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve the resolution for summary publication. Is there a second?
Second.
Saying by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, attorney Techen.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution number sixteen. Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. All right, now we need a motion to amend the fee schedule.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve the resolution amending the 2025 fee schedule. Is there a second?
Second.
Saying by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion?
So I might be doing something a little weird tonight, but what I'm going to do is, because, and this is my own fault, not having done the due diligence that I feel the public deserves in not having printed out in color, which is going to be something for the future, I'm, I'm going to abstain, but not for a negative reason. I'm going to abstain because I feel comfortable abstaining in that we, it won't, it won't put a block into moving it forward, because we have enough people here to move it forward. But just in good conscience, I can't vote on something having not looked at the numbers, but I also don't want to hold up the progress of this, if that makes any sense. So I just want people to understand why I'm abstaining. It's, again, I don't, there's a lot of times that abstentions come with a negative connotation. That is not at all why I'm abstaining. It's just, it's a conscious, conscience thing.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, attorney Techen.
Resolution seventeen, Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Abstain.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero with one abstention. Okay, looking for approval of the resolution for the agreement with the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve the resolution for agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Saying by Councilmember Schultz. Any further discussion? Attorney Techen.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye. Motion passes, that was resolution eighteen, I believe.
Eighteen, correct.
Resolution eighteen is, was approved four to zero. Now we need a motion to approve the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry agreement.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Schultz. Is there a second?
Second.
Saying by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, next, council payable. Any questions on that?
Motion to approve the accounts payable.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Schultz to approve tonight's council payable as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Saying by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Right. Administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, staff will be busy this week, again, training with Rum River, and also getting ready for the April first launch of the website. So April first is going to be a big day around here. And I also just wanted to say thank you to Natalie Santillo for sitting in over there and helping me out tonight, since Chief Administrator Michelson couldn't be here with us. And that's all I have.
Clerk Santillo, any comments? Okay, before moving on to council attorney's report, we are blessed to have our state representative here. If she would like to come to the mic and say a few words, that would be lovely.
Thank you so much, Mayor Poppy, and all the council member here, and the community members who are here. Thank you so much for having me here today. I just left the Capitol, and I want to let you guys know that I am fighting hard. I've been working with your administrator office and the team there, and we are working on a couple of bills and, and really legislative pieces that pertain specifically to Osseo. Currently, right now, I sit on the legacy council, uh, legacy committee, human services and housing. And on the legacy committee, I am pushing a, a couple of pieces for Osseo, especially for youth, um, youth initiatives, and then also a couple of big budget items for the city. So if you have any questions at all, please feel free to come see me. And thank you so much for the work that you and I have been doing. I'm glad that everything is being sorted out. So we're going to continue working, and, and please know that this is a very interesting year. It is a budget year, and there's a lot of things going on happening at the Capitol. But it's, it's definitely a, right now, we're in the thick of things, but I'll definitely make sure to provide you with updates pertaining to the city of Osseo. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council and attorneys report. Attorney Techen.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, I just want to compliment Rum River. You know, they're, they've been really great to work with, and I appreciate the, the input they had on the ordinance process. That was very much appreciated. So I just wanted the council to know that they've been great to work with, from my perspective, and staff too, I think. The other thing is, I think with the Laserfish, I am thrilled that you're doing this too. I think from a data practices standpoint, this will also help the city stay in compliance with its obligations to make data more easily accessible to the public, and that's an important obligation for the city. And, and this project will certainly help, help with that. So I think it's a very good thing.
Councilmember Torres.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you very much for coming in and gracing, gracing our city with your presence. Really appreciate all the help, especially on the legacy committee. That, I think, is going to be really helpful for us to move forward with the youth program that we've been discussing. And as far as the big, big rock stuff, the big projects, I mean, we're sitting in one of those big rock projects that needs to be addressed at some point. I would like to real quickly, oh, and just for clarity and transparency, the item that the representative I have been working on was for a constituent who, I discovered that there is a statute in the unemployment statute that is really kind of quirky. And, you know, without going into details, the way the statute works is if you are denied unemployment, there's a requirement that you continue to apply for unemployment, which seems obviously counterintuitive, right? This particular constituent got caught up in that. He was missing out on four weeks of benefits because of that. And then doing some digging into the statute and the, how the statute was written, found that no notice was given. And I won't go into the whole legality of it, but ultimately, we are able to get the Department of Economic D E E D, I can never remember the last half of it, to reverse course and actually take care of that constituent. And then moving forward, they are re-examining that statute to either bring it more in line with the realities of how that process works, or to literally start putting the notice on this, on the notice that tells you you're not able to get unemployment benefits. I mean, it's just, it's kind of ridiculous. It's like your dad and mom teach you, if you ask for something and we say no, no means no. Stop asking, unless it's unemployment, and then you, even though you're told no, keep asking. So anyway, thank you very much for the help with that. I really appreciate it. That was a good outcome for that citizen. That was a good outcome for that citizen. Real quickly, we had the first meeting of our Historical Preservation Committee. And one of the things I found very interesting in that is our history, Osseo's collective history, is sitting upstairs in a closet. And while that seems like, oh yeah, we're a small town, it's going to be in a closet, what happens if, God forbid, there's a fire or God forbid, there is a flood? And we saw flooding is not that improbable of a circumstance. I saw pictures just last week of water in the building. So one of the things we will be bringing forward, and I really appreciate Clerk Santillo, I'm going to get it right one of these days, as, as our liaison with staff, we're looking at various opportunities to protect that history. And, you know, I know it sounds kind of quiche to say it, but I'm telling you, you don't want to lose your history. And that's the whole point of having this committee, is to protect and preserve the history of a wonderful city that's 150 years old. It would be such a shame to lose those things when it's not that big a deal to find ways to protect that. So more to come on that. The other thing that we're going to be looking at as far as that committee is working in conjunction with the 150th Committee to do kind of a pop-up museum. I was able to speak to the owner of the building across the, the parking lot here, who happens to also be my landlord, who has also graciously allowed, or has given us permission to use that building for this pop-up. So there will be more coming on that. That's going to take place about the same time, right after Lions Roar. So kind of a conclusion to the celebration. You'll be able to come and the public will be able to see all this really cool stuff up there. I mean, there is some really cool stuff. Other than that, that's all I got.
Councilmember Cook?
No report.
Councilmember Schultz?
No report.
Okay. All right, moving on to some general announcements here. Getting tied in with the 150th celebration, we have the Potato Bar Dinner and Bake Sale held on April 5th at the Osseo Community Center from 4 till 8. So you can get your tickets at osseomn150th.com. Reach out, get your tickets. Tickets are $15 for adults and $8 for children. So come on up. There'll be a lot of activities and things going on. And I believe some of our businesses in town do have some specials on food and drink. So look for those around town as well. And then also coming up to put it on your calendar for the annual Osseo Fire Department Relief Association, is hosting their Easter egg hunt. That's always a great event. That'll be on April 12th this year at 11:30 a.m. at the fire station and then cross the street and the kids find eggs in the park. So that's a lot of, a lot of fun. With that, moving on to adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Cook. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres, non-doubtable. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. We're adjourned at 7:53. Thank you.